Begin, please join me in a moment of silence for the following. Marjorie Struther, retiree of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Mark Clayton, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin this evening with our last BPT presentation, which will be also including a budget presentation from the North Syracuse Early Education Program. So I'm going to ask the building planning team to come up here. And yes, I'm going to take one last time, I'm going to do a point of personal privilege. The presenter in the center is Michelle Schalcross. Michelle Laverne, I knew her as forty years ago. This fall, she was a seventh grader in my first class at a Prokial school in the city of Syracuse. She looks just like she did way back then. And you owe me Hallmark still, I think. Yeah, you can ask Michelle.
All right, well, thank you for the brief introduction. You started us off, but as you heard, we are here to do two presentations and one for you tonight. I'm Don Hussein, principal at the Early Education Program. And I have with me tonight Michelle Schalcross and Kate Tabatis. We're going to start off with the BPT presentation, then we'll move into the budget portion of the presentation. So here we go.
Good evening, everyone. This year at NSCEP, we have had 296 students total, with fifty-two percent of them identified as preschoolers with a disability. Over the past few years, our numbers were reduced to COVID restrictions, a total enrollment of 194 students in the 2020-2021 school year, and 267 students in the 21-22 school year. We're happy to say that we are back to nearly full capacity in the school. We have also have the pleasure of being one of North Syracuse's newest UPK sites, offering both full day and half day UPK sessions. Although we have twelve school districts represented in our program this year, seventy-three percent of our student population are North Syracuse residents. A change this year was increasing therapist staff for speech, occupational, and physical therapy due to enrollment being back to pre-COVID numbers and students entering the school with increasing needs. We are also excited that a school resource officer has been provided by the district to support the safety of our program. Our vision and mission statements are aligned with the district and continue to reflect our strong belief in meeting the needs of all students at their developmental levels. I'll give you a moment to read both. The first district goal is focusing on graduation rate, which may be the most impacted by reducing chronic absenteeism throughout the district. We know that students learn and grow best when they are in school. As you can see, our chronic absenteeism rate doubled between the 2021 school year and the 21-22 school year. This is due to a variety of factors, mainly due to COVID restrictions and protocols. In the 2020-2021 school year, virtual learning occurred frequently due to entire classrooms being quarantined after an exposure. At that point, the attendance of students was confirmed as long as students participated in a learning activity or therapy session per day of quarantine. As we moved into the 21-22 school year, quarantining measures were changing for school-aged students due to vaccine availability and the ability to quarantine few students in a classroom setting. But NSCEP's protocols remained much the same. At NSCEP, we saw continued illnesses and exposure to COVID, requiring individual students to quarantine due to family or community exposure. Vaccines were not available to our population until late last school year, causing all students that had a family or community exposure to quarantine without quarantining the entire classroom. We also saw an increase in typical preschool illnesses once masks were removed and students were entering the community more frequently, causing many absences. Lastly, our financial structure requires us to maintain enrollment of the students who are out of school for an extended period of time, typically due to medical procedures, family vacations, or trips out of the country. As always, a lack of transportation for our students who are not eligible for busing impacts attendance. Moving forward, we anticipate that this school year will have a much lower absenteeism rate than the previous year. Our goal is to reduce the absenteeism rate by twenty percent. Beyond the changes in COVID policies, we are encouraging attendance through family participation in school events to build relationships with families, monthly attendance committee meetings, and communication to the families of chronically absent students from the health office, attendance letters from the school principal, and utilizing the social worker to support families in getting their children to school.
The second goal that we're focusing on this year surrounds reading proficiency. This year, we will continue to utilize Learning Without Tears curriculum, the New York State preschool standards, the curriculum map that was developed by our staff, and developmentally appropriate play-based learning experiences to facilitate growth and literacy. We are also introducing the Hagerty phonemic awareness curriculum in our classrooms starting mid-year. Our goal is that our students will demonstrate a ten-point increase in the total score of language proficiency and school readiness skills as evidenced by the speed dial assessment, which is given to all students at the beginning, at the end, and at the end of the school year. The June speed dial results of our kindergarten-bound students are also utilized by the district's kindergarten teachers as their screening tool. As you can see, our 2021-2022 speed dial data shows that general education students were able to achieve a standard score that was ten points higher and a total score that was ten points higher from the beginning to the end of the school year. Our students with disabilities achieved a standard score that was fourteen points higher and a total score that was eight point four six points higher from the beginning to the end of the school year. Our goal is that both general education population and the students with disabilities will increase their total score on the speed dial by ten points by the end of the school year.
District goal number three surrounds the improvement of the emotional competency for all students. This is an area that we pride ourselves in, as much of our focus is on emotional regulation, executive functioning skills, and interpersonal skill development. We do this through the use of the Second Step curriculum, Pedals Coaching and Training, student sessions with our two school psychologists and school social worker, and the guidance of the New York State preschool standards. Last year, six out of the twelve classrooms participated in using the DEVERO Early Childhood Assessment, also known as the DECA. This is a screening tool that measures students' abilities for total protective factors in the domains of initiative, self-regulation, attachment relationships, and behavioral concerns. The classrooms that utilized the DECA last year saw a noticeable improvement in the social, emotional, and behavioral skills of students from the beginning of the year to the end of the school year. This year, all classrooms are utilizing the DECA to collect data around these domains, and our goal is to see a decrease in students demonstrating social-emotional needs on this rating scale. Since this is the first year that the tool is being utilized by all classrooms, we will focus our conversations next year around the data that the DECA produced from this year. The DECA, or we call it the EDECA, as identified here since we track the data electronically, focuses on the four main areas of social-emotional competencies of initiative, self-regulation, attachment relationships, and behavioral concerns. What we strive to see in this screening tool is that more students are exhibiting skills in the typical and strength areas rather than areas of need. In the 21-22 school year, the six classrooms that completed this assessment saw growth in all domains, which is very exciting.
We are also in the third year of benefiting from an in-house coach from the Pedals Grant, who works regularly with the teachers to implement the Second Step curriculum and support the students' social-emotional development. This graph is a representation of data collected from October 2021 to June 2022 by the Pedals Coach. The increase from October to June reflects her noting evidence of the classroom staff integrating the Second Step tools and strategies into their teaching practice. This graph represents weekly teacher data to indicate disruptive behaviors in their classroom. As you can see, from the September to June, there was a significant decrease in disruptive behaviors with the implementation of the Second Step program. We are in the exploratory phase of integrating professional learning communities into our professional practice. As you may know, Barbara Phillips is contracting with the district to move this professional practice forward. As a BPT, we have reviewed the district's strategic plan and have established SMART goals for our building. We are working on developing building-wide norms for collaborative meetings. Next steps will be taking a look at the essential questions to center us on identifying our essential standards. We look forward to sending out a few representatives to the Summer Institute in August. We have a multiple, we have a multitude of things to celebrate about over the past year at North Syracuse Early Education Program, some of which include ordering the new shade structures on our playground, a new mindful space funded by the generosity of Dr. Draker, and updated gross motor equipment donated to revamp our Zoom Room Play area. We continue to receive Title I funding, which supports our school, social worker, and other initiatives throughout the school. Thank you for your time. Any questions before we move forward with the budget presentation?
Questions, comments? No, go ahead and move forward.
All right. This is the most exciting part, right? The budget presentation. They saved that part for me. So as a reminder, we're a 44-10 special education program, and therefore, our budget operates independent from the school district's K-12 budget. Last year, the state notified us in March that we are receiving a four percent increase for the 21-22 school year. While this was good news, it is challenging to plan for a school year without knowing that information until March. A change in the calculation for our funding methodology has not been finalized, but we were informed of a substantial eleven percent increase prior to the starting of this school year, which was great. It goes without the saying, that was super exciting. Our annual state and county-funded tuition rates are noted here on this slide, along with our UPK seats, which are funded by the district for the four-year-olds attending five days per week in our full-day and afternoon-half-day classrooms. We continue to collect parent-paid tuition for some of our other spaces, specific to our three-year-olds and out-of-district students. Additional revenue comes in from the flow-through money from the 611 and 619 grant funding for special education students, CPSC grant, and the Title I grant. This slide just represents a summary of our estimated special education, general education, and UPK tuition revenue, including the summer session for this current school year. Anticipated tuition revenue is just over six point seven million. Estimated expenditures for this school year are just under six point nine million, which is an anticipated six percent increase over last year. This pie chart just represents a different view of the estimated expenditures for the school year, but I like to highlight each year that ninety-five point five percent of our expenses are directly related to salary and benefits for our staff. So for other financial thoughts, we're very thankful that we're able to offer our North Syracuse four-year-olds a UPK seat this year at the North Syracuse Early Ed Program, and we look forward to continuing this partnership. We have an outstanding waiver pending for the 2021 school year. We had a deficit of $500,000, and we're waiting for a response from the state on that. With the eleven percent increase for this year, if we have a surplus, we are seeking some clarification that programs will be able to keep up to an eleven percent increase or overage. So we're kind of figuring out how that will work. And lastly, we've been working with the state at their request to create an action plan for special education students that are on a waitlist for special class integrated setting services. There's a countywide shortage of services, and we no longer have state approval to exceed our classroom ratio by adding an additional student. So we formally requested and have been approved just last week to open two additional half-day classrooms, each with an AM and a PM session that would prioritize services for at least twenty-five North Syracuse special education students that are on the waitlist. This will require a staff increase of two special education teachers, two to four teaching assistants, depending on enrollment, and additional related service providers for speech, OT, and PT. These additional classrooms were not factored into the budget presentation due to us just finding out about it last week. Should this put us into a deficit situation, though, we do have adequate fund balance to cover the shortage. And that is the highlights of our budget presentation for this year. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
May I ask a quick question? It looks like the speech therapist is decreased from last year. Did we just not have as much need for one? Is there less kids? Or maybe I'm reading.
Let me just go back to on the slide that you're talking about, right? Um. That's a good question. It's not decreased, but it would have to do with, I'm trying to think if we had a retirement last year. I believe that was the situation. We did, actually, yeah. We did, it was not a direct speech therapist, but it was, we had a speech therapist that was working in our CPSC office, and she retired, and so when that happens and we hire someone new, generally the, yep, the rate would change.
So just to clarify for me and the board, which I'm sure they understand, but just in case, the, we have on the agenda tonight an approval of positions, and that's what you're referencing at the end here with regards to the plan with the State Ed Department that was just approved of the two new classrooms. So that was referenced in the Friday letter that we all received, and we have that on the agenda tonight. And you did, I do see here you have adequate fund balance to cover that, because it sounds like you just said it could be four to four-plus positions.
Right, for the teaching assistants especially, that really is the questionable one right now, because the classroom ratio will be a six-one-one ratio or a twelve-one-two. So six special ed students, one teacher, one TA. Once we add general education students, it would be twelve students total, one teacher, two teaching assistants. So we currently do not have any general education students that would be starting in those classrooms, but the state has given us permission to go ahead and open the classrooms with just special ed students. So that would be the one teacher, one TA per classroom to start with.
So typically, we need general ed students in there for the ratio for funding purposes. Am I accurate?
Not for funding purposes, but most importantly, just to meet the approved ratio, because it's an integrated setting classroom. So that's most importantly, right? But we specifically asked the question because knowing that they'd like us to get these classes going.
Program, correct. Yes, but we do not have the general ed students yet.
For the new classrooms, correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions? Just wanted to clarify.
Not a question, but just I'm very glad that we're able to add these two new classrooms. You guys have a great program, and there's clearly a need out there. So I'm very happy that we're able to accommodate more students with your program, so.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. See you next year, maybe, huh? Forty-one. Okay, we're at the point where we have comments from the public. Do we have anybody signed up today? We do not have anybody signed up today, but just as a reminder, we do welcome comments from the public. So please, anytime, come here, sign up by Friday before the warming at 3:00 PM. Or at any time, please send any communication to us via emails, most convenient way. You can send it to the district clerk, and she will see that the entire board receives that. Moving along, we have Board of Education Committee reports. Does the Policy Committee have any report for us today? I don't think so.
No report, just mentioning that the next Policy Committee meeting will be held a week from tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. And legislative, we have one coming up.
Yes, sir. Our Legislative Committee will be meeting Wednesday, December 7th, five to six, and we'll be talking about community schools. And we're also having Matt Root come and talk a little bit about the funding for their program at the high school. And I'm hoping, I know Senator Mannion's person will be there. But a couple of things I want to mention now, so I don't have to wait till later. A reminder, we got our newspaper today from the New York State Schools Boards. One really great day is February 10th. Paul and I, I think I did this last year, the Virtual Capital Conference, which is excellent, because you get to see the governor's executive proposal. She'll have somebody there, and also our staff members to talk about the budget ahead of time. So I think that's great. But one thing I really am asking each of you tonight when you go home. We have received this the last couple of weeks through the New York School Board. I am adamant that this governor gives us universal school meals. Hunger and malnutrition are serious problems, and there are far too many of our students who don't have it. And during COVID, it was great, because we had the monies to have this. Yes, three of our schools or two of our schools do have this. All of our schools should have this. So please go home tonight. It's very easy. You go into what the School Boards Association gave you. You send it to Senator Mannion, you send it to Al Sterpi, and you let them know about this. And we're going to talk about this tomorrow, because I feel this is a need for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to go off of that, I mean, the data showed when they presented the meal data, that kids are not eating like they were when it was available to them, so, yeah.
Superintendent's comments? The Bowles.
Thank you. Just want to say a great thank you for everyone that participated in the community forum that the county executive Ryan McMahon hosted in our junior high school. From the custodians to 4D productions to administration, really did an outstanding job at hosting that event that was well-attended and met a need. So I do want to say thank you again to everyone for that. We've had two honor roll breakfasts last week at the junior high, in eighth grade and ninth grade. There were many students that were in attendance, as well as the parents that showed up. That was a wonderful event. Also, last week at the time, there was a boys' basketball game that they beat Ithaca. And so that was a great start to their season, and one of our own returned home on Sunday with about three hundred boys and girls, Brianna Stewart. I don't know if there's enough time to list all the accolades that she has gained, but a good time was had by all, because she did come home and she remembers where her roots were, and I can't thank her enough. And a few other things that took place, I think hockey beat Auburn eleven to one, and our CNN's boys' wrestling team for the first time beat Fulton for the first time in history. And I think, Bob, you said it best. Mr. Blue would be looking down and be very proud of that accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Board of Education comments? We had some. I have a few.
I just wanted to remind everybody about tomorrow.
To me, it's a very important vote from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And I know our district clerk will be up very early tomorrow. But to anybody that's out there listening, please, this is a vote for safety, for improvements at Gillette Road and also at the field. So the tax, as Don tells us, is very low percentage, it's below one percent. And I'm hoping all the taxpayers come out and vote tomorrow.
Thank you. My turn? Anytime I want? Okay. I'm going to go during Board of Education comments. I thought, I figured you thought that. That's okay. I'm being, I'm sorry, I apologize. But you scared me, because you referenced the New York State School Boards magazine, and you can see I've color-coded my copy. This, now, maybe I don't pay good enough attention, but I look at this, and we have a North Syracuse teacher right on the front page of it, Timothy Kruger. And the article speaks to things that I've spoken about here before and written about in some letters, and it just blew me away, because it's, we had the civics presentation earlier with Lisa Goldberg, and I just, I highlighted a couple of things, and if you, everybody received this. So if you haven't read it, you don't need me to read it to you. I want to read my. But this is fantastic, because it's speaking to a real, real major, major problem we have in this country with social media and misinformation and fiction morphing into nonfiction. And when you start the, it got my attention right away when somebody in the class says Helen Keller totally was a faked it. That how could she learn to talk or write? There's no way. And kids believed that, because in the beginning of this discussion in his class, students saw this on TikTok. And I thought TikTok, they danced and something, but I guess you can spread misinformation also. Isn't that wonderful? And Mr. Kruger has been tapped by the American Federation of Teachers to develop, help develop a two-day professional development program to train teachers in media and information literacy. So, long story short, I'll go to the end, and maybe we did hear a little bit about this, and I didn't place the name with the issue. You know, in references that not all parents approve. He talks about some, you know, controversial issues. Students will talk about it. It sounds like he's been a great facilitator, not taking sides, but letting students talk and discuss and learning how to do it civilly. But topics come up that go home, and apparently last year, some parents complained to the school principal. And when I go to page six, they went right up, right up the chain to the district office. Says superintendent that the lessons were a form of indoctrination. And I was proud to read that our building-level administrators and our district-level administrators supported this teacher and allowed this person to continue to fill, let students discuss and be a facilitator of those discussions. And so if you haven't read that, I just encourage you to read it, because I think this is, it gives me a glimmer of hope, because there is so much, so much garbage out there, and nobody, they teach the skill on how to go in and verify what you're reading online, which is a skill that existed in the early days of search engines like AltaVista, which you've probably never heard of, where you had to use Boolean language, Mark's not in his head, and then go in and learn how to verify that it was a reliable source. Then along came Google, type something in, and you got it right in front of you, and hey, whatever you read is true. So I just wanted to point that out, because it was a joy to read that when I just caught that on the front page, and something I think is really critical. And I will end there and say, any other board comments? Yes, sir. And I will end there and say any other board comments? Yes, sir.
I, I'd like to address a man that's kind of serious right now. Wow, I got a big voice. The other day, of course, I was late for work and when I get late for work, when I go up Malloy Road, I get behind what? The school buses. Well, thanks to a diligent school bus driver, a young lady is still here today. Because as I was waiting, you know, that bus had to make like three stops down Malloy Road, about the third stop down Malloy Road. A young lady comes out of her house to get in the bus. You could see she got stopped by the bus driver and a minivan went blowing right by her. If that bus driver and that student hadn't been in communication, that girl probably would be in the hospital if, at very least today. So please, I remind everybody how important it is to stop for those kids and how important being a bus driver in this district is. And in all the districts because they have all your kids' safety in their hands at all times. And it just, it was a really scary moment for me. Because you know, as annoyed as I was and I had to stop three times for this bus and I was running late for work. It was, it was just horrifying to watch that van just blow by that bus. So, thank you and, and thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'm going to move on and ask for a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting on November twenty-first. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed and that is carried. Motion, please, for B, C, and D to place before us. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Segru. These are the classification of disabled students for school, preschool, and home instruction. They are before us. Seeing no discussion, all in favor. Posed and that is carried. Thank you. Discussion action items, A is the appointment of the voting system specialist. Can I have a motion placed that before us? Motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed and that is carried. B, please, resolution authorizing a settlement with the Syracuse Windsor Land LLC in the town of Clay. Motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Dr. Kramer. That is before us. If you read that, that is basically the Tops property. Down in Airport Plaza and this is a roll call vote. So that's before us. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, see? Hi.
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 Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Yeah, motion, please, to place C before us. Motion from Ms. Segru, second from Dr. Kramer. That's a resolution to ratify the agreement we have before you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed and that is carried. Motion placed D before us, please. Motion, Ms. Marizio, second from Mr. Thorne. Okay, this is to create the positions at North Syracuse Early Education Program that was just in the presentation that we saw and in the Friday letter described. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed, great, that's carried. Thank you. We have acknowledgement of gifts. This before your motion to acknowledge that, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Segru. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed and that is carried. Thank you. Acknowledgement of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three textbook list. Motion placed that before us, please. Dr. Kramer, motion, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed and that is carried. Thank you. And our marketable and non-marketable surplus item G, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from. Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? All in favor. Posed, that is carried. Thank you very much. Instructional personnel report, A, motion to place that before us, please. Motion from Dr. Kramer. Second from Mr. Thorne. A is before us. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed and that is carried. Support staff personnel report, B. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Segru. That is before us. Any discussion? Seeing that all in favor. Posed, that is carried. So at this point, I'm going to make a motion for executive session. I'll ask for a second. The motion is to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing. Two personnel matters with no action to follow and review one legal matter with no action to follow. Would you like to second that, Mr. Herman? Thank you. That's the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed and that is carried. Motion for adjournment, please. Motion, Ms. Marizio, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed, we are adjourned. Six thirty-seven. Thank you.